I hereby call the November 20th, 2014, meeting of the Board of Trustees for Johnson County Community College to order. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we're sworn to be, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recall and recognition of visitors, Ms. Schley.
This evening's visitors include Ruth Randall, Margaret Waterman, Dick Carter, Sonia, and Robin Robles.
Thank you. Next item is the open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum during, period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. There are no registered speakers for tonight's open forum, so we will close the open forum section. Thank you. Awards and recognition, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. I'd like to ask of his chief, Greg Russell, to come to the podium.
Thank you. Dr. Cook, Dr. Sobchak, Board of Trustees, members, friends, colleagues. I'm not running for office. On October 15th, 2014, at approximately 11:22 a.m. in the morning, the police department received a telephone call of an individual that was non-responsive in the library. The officers, Officer Ryan Futrell and Officer Dan Robles, was dispatched on the call. On their arrival, they found three citizens, members of our community college administering first aid to a student who, at that time, was non-responsive. The students and citizens of Johnson County Community College, Mr. Sean Biggs, Mr. Ryan Darrell, and Mr. Jason Curry, had initiated CPR and were doing compressions. As they were doing compressions and taking turns, the officers also joined in and assisted with the CPR compressions. From that point, the AED, which is the defibrillator, was activated and was applied to the student. As a result of those efforts, a combination of the CPR and the AED, the student regained consciousness, and we contacted Med Act and transported him to Overland Park Regional Hospital. I would like to say today that as a result of those actions performed on that day, there is no doubt that these five people saved that individual's life. So, in recognition, which is a first for the police department, I would like to present certificate of commendations to those five brave individuals. And it is a first for the college since our inception in 2008, so I take great pleasure in having this opportunity with Dr. Cook to present these awards. Mr. Ryan Darrell. Officer Ryan Futrell. Mr. Sean Biggs. Mr. Jason Curry. And last but not least, the face of Johnson County Community College, Officer Dan Robles. With this, I thank you for the, your participation, your efforts, and also I thank the gallery, the board, for recognizing these individuals on a very brave task that most of us might hesitate to perform. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. And as always, your job well done. Dr. Horvath.
Well, I would like to join with Phi Theta Kappa Center for Excellence in honoring one of our faculty members, Dr. Pat Decker. And, Dr. Decker, if you would please come to the podium. Dr. Decker is being recognized for five years of service in leading the Alpha Iota Gamma Chapter here at the college. She has been at Johnson County Community College for six years and has been the Phi Theta Kappa advisor since she was hired. During that time, she was recognized as a distinguished advisor at the International Convention in 2014, and that award recognizes advisors who have made significant contributions to the growth of individual chapter members and encourage the chapter to be involved on the local, regional, and national, international levels of the organization. So Pat has done all of those things in her time here. In addition to that, she has also been instrumental in the chapter obtaining five-star level each of the past five years, and that is a process that's the highest level of accomplishment for the chapters, and they have to meet a certain level of criteria in order for that to happen. So Pat, thank you very much for all that you have done for the chapter here at the college.
I guess my comment would be that I have had an opportunity to work with some of the best students anywhere, I think, in this process, and the enjoyment that I get and the satisfaction that I get from it is that I get to see them grow and learn and develop in leadership skills, in teamwork, and in scholarship. So, it's my pleasure. Thank you.
Pat, we talk about relevance. We talked about it at the faculty back-to-school session, and you certainly have indicated your relevance locally, nationally, and internationally, and with this five-star award, we sincerely appreciate how you've represented yourself in the college. Congratulations. Wish you the very best.
Thanks.
Next item is Student Senate Report. Mr. Redmond.
Since our previous meeting, Senate has been busy with several coordinated efforts. First and foremost was the annual tradition of Trick or Treat for Kids. I'm sure you're quite familiar with what this event entails. Senate alongside other campus clubs and organizations hosts a safe alternative to outdoor trick-or-treating. This event has been popular in recent years for not only the campus community, but for the collaborative efforts of the clubs that participate. The clubs that joined together this year were International Club, Luna, which stands for Latinos United Now and Always, the Student Environmental Alliance, Paranormal Club, Hospitality Club, and Prepharmacy Club. Trick or Treat for Kids is a great event to be a part of, and we hope that it is around for years to come. A club funding request that passed through Senate this month was one from Phi Theta Kappa. PTK's request assistance from Senate in regard to their annual upkeep in accreditation for their academic honor society status, which you mentioned previously. They must make two trips in the upcoming semester for training and to participate in their regional and national conventions. Senate was also host to Ms. Kristy Howell from the Sustainability Department, an advisor to the Student Environmental Alliance. Ms. Howell educated Senate in the wide range of projects that the Sustainability Department is currently involved in, and the other opportunities that students can join in the upcoming semester. And finally, to round off the current semester, our JCCC Gives program has received over 20 families that have been nominated by our community. You may remember that JCCC Gives is a service project that finds those in need a way to satiate those needs through the upcoming holidays. Currently, we have moved on to the second stage of our operation, which is fundraising. In this year, our service and fundraising team has put together a pledge drive where students, faculty, and staff volunteers will shave their heads or beards if a certain amount of money has been raised. But in some cases, some volunteers have elected a third option, which would be to dye their hair a different color. One such volunteer would be our very own Dr. Sobchak, who has agreed to dye his hair if, currently the vote is set at green, if we manage to raise $1,000. And at this time, I would like to remind the board that we accept cash or check. And if there are no further questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions of Mr. Redmond of the trustees?
I thought we were the paranormal club. There's another, there's another club?
There's a club. I guess there was some overlap there.
Well, two things. I believe as we visit among ourselves about the Student Senate, we really appreciate the great work you're doing and all the projects you have, and the contribution we're about to give you was going to be for that reason, but I think now in part, if there's an incentive to get to $1,000 so our president can have a different color of hair because white and gray is not very complimentary, and of all of us that are white and gray. But under Trustee Musil's leadership, the trustees have collectively want to make a contribution to your effort of $500. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your participation, Dr. Sobchak, and thank you all. Thank you.
Good luck to you. Thank you. College lobbyists, report, Mr. Carter.
Maybe Jeff could come back up here for just a moment. I wasn't aware that this was going to happen, but I really would like to see a different color on our president. So I have a little something I'd like to give to Jeff to help along the way, so. That may be the best report, part of the report that I give this entire year. I'm not going to talk about the elections. I did circulate a memo that I think you received probably shortly after the November elections, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have about what occurred. I think enough time has passed that there have been press reports and enough things have begun to shake out that you're very familiar with where we're heading for this upcoming session. I would mention that on December 1st, the House will get together and hold leadership elections for the top post, well, leadership in the House, that is. And right now, there are only two known folks who are interested in running for that spot. One would be the incumbent leader, Representative Ray Merrick, and then another House member who's been serving, I think, for not quite 10 years, and that would be Virgil Peck. And so the contest will be between those two folks. You know, nothing, I've learned to say, never say never, and anything can happen, and if you're ever in doubt, you can Google just exactly what happened today in Nevada in their speaker's race and read about that this evening at home, and just understand how important these types of elections are for the folks that help coordinate the legislative body and lead the folks that we've elected to send to Topeka. I will talk briefly about the consensus revenue estimate estimating group that met a little bit earlier this month, shortly after the election, and they did not deliver good news. That group indicated that in the current fiscal year, which runs through June 30th of 2015, we'll have to find $280 million. And that's, that's just as of last week. That number could fluctuate and/or change between that time. The next piece of bad news then would be for fiscal year 2016, which we'll begin discussing in January, and the numbers right now initially point to about a $435 million gap that will need to be filled or figured out as budget makers come back and begin to assemble and put together the budget for, for the next fiscal year. There have been a number of rumors at this point, and that's all they are, but we have to, to filter all of them about how we might arrive at some of those dollars. Some think that there are still efficiencies to be found in government, and I think you can always look in areas where you can find efficiencies and keep those savings. We've heard about sweeping the four tenths of a cent that have been dedicated to the T-Works program, which would generate a little over $200 million annually. There have been additional conversations about mid-year cuts that could be in the range of 10% to 15%. Whether or not those are applied across the board is unknown. There are some agencies that simply you cannot cut because of the type of services that they provide or the requirements that there may be, either a federal tie or some public safety matter. And so we deal with all of those issues moving into the next budget year. The other thing is, is the governor has the authority to issue mid-year allotments where he can take a scalpel and carve out pieces of the budget that may have already been pledged to different agencies. So that's something that we'll continue to be watching as we get ready for the upcoming session. The other item of note, and again, I'm not going to make any projections here, but the State Finance Council will be meeting in the coming days, and typically, they meet to assess any financial needs that the state may have when the legislature's not in session. And while it's possible that they could issue additional revenue bonds to, to help the state get through any, any rough times until a, a budget bill is passed, I'm not certain if that will occur or not, but they will be meeting in the, over the next few days or in the next few days. A couple of other brief announcements. The Regents just announced yesterday that Matt Casey will be their new legislative liaison. The reason I tell you that is because that position was vacant last year. There was somebody that was contracted to help herd the cats of those folks who represent higher education across the street at the State House, but I see this as a positive change and move for the board. Matt's a young man from the Manhattan area, graduated from Kansas State University, and will, will be ripe to learn the ropes for higher education, but is well-versed in the legislative process, and so that will be a good thing for higher education moving forward this year. And then finally, the Legislative Breakfast Series that we host, our Johnson County delegation will be occurring in the near future, and those dates, just, you'll be getting an email asking, if you haven't already, asking about the dates of your availability are December 2, 4, and 11. Those are the dates that we've penciled out for hosting our Johnson County delegation, and so if you're able, we always appreciate your participation at those events. It really does help carry the voice, and it is just a conversation with those that are, that are elected to represent the county, and they've proven to be very beneficial, I think, over the past several years. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I would, I would close and see if there are any questions or comments.
Two things while the other trustees think of their comments or questions. The first is that we would really encourage at least two of us to be at each of those breakfasts, and hopefully, your calendars will be clear to do that because this really is about the relationship business. My second point is that there have been public comments by the governor and others, particularly as the governor reassigns his roadmap about local control of schools and particularly at the higher ed level, community college level, and also strong support for the community college effort across the state. Others make public comments, but sometimes when we gather in Topeka, sometimes those, those thoughts get clouded by other viewpoints. I would just encourage all of us to make sure that when we have an opportunity, it seems like whenever we have a representative, a senator, a state or federal on campus, they're very impressed with the programs we offer and the effective teaching and learning that takes on with our students. But we as trustees, I believe, need to always work at those relationships when we're with them, when we're with them, whether, whatever the purpose may be. So, Mr. Carter, I don't know if you have a response to that. I really don't want to get into a discussion on that if you're not prepared, but the, we always say that this will be an interesting session in Topeka, and I think this goes without saying that with the financial cloud that's hanging over, up until July 1st, this, this could be a very interesting session. Any comments or questions that any of you have for Trustee Musil?
The, the governor has the power to make allotments called decisions on the federal level, basically just to cut spending across the board. He can't pick and choose. Is that right?
I'm not sure if they have to be, I'm trying to remember, the last time this occurred was during the Graves administration in 200...
Mr., I think Governor Parkinson did some allotments.
Did he do some allotments? I'm trying to remember if they have, if they are required by statute to be across the board, or if there is the ability to, I'd have to go back and read the statute, Trustee Musil.
I guess what, the difficult point, I think, for anybody that budgets, and Barbara, that's probably your bailiwick, is that if you have a 5% cut off your annual budget, but you only have the last six months of the year to do it in, it's a 10% cut.
That's, that is correct.
So the longer we wait, or the governor waits, or we get into January, February, or March when the legislature's in session, a 5% cut becomes a 10% or a 15% cut. So it's, you know, as, as hard as it may be, I suspect the governor has to look at doing something sooner rather than dumping all that into the last couple of months of the fiscal year. There's a statement in your, in your comment, or in your supplement, that says, "It is anticipated that local units of government will face legislation aiming to cap the local ability to levy revenue." Is that just the same, the same efforts that we've been aware of in the past, or are you saying there's some new effort?
No, I think that you'll see the same Tabor and Tabor-like type of legislation coming forward, again, if, if not in additional multiple forms that we'll be dealing with.
Tabor's being the acronym for Taxpayer Bill Rights, which would limit the ability of local units of government.
Initiative and referendum, essentially.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's my understanding that what local units of government do in raising their own revenue for their own programs has nothing to do with the state's budget problems. Is that a fair statement?
I think it's a fair statement.
Yeah.
Other, other questions or comments? Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I saw some chatter today from some reporters with, regarding the Kansas Department of Education, the director there saying that they were concerned about the state capping reserve funds from school boards and then sweeping reserves into the general fund to make up for these losses. That doesn't sound legal to me, since a nice chunk of that is local effort in terms of LOB or with us, or obviously, our local mill levy. Have you heard anything to that effect? Like I said, there were reporters reporting on it. The governor, apparently somebody asked the governor about this, and he refused to comment. I didn't know, you being in Topeka full-time, are you hearing anything to that effect?
No, other than just the initial Twitter chatter and 140 characters today from, from some of the excerpts of the Kansas Board of Education meeting, State Board of Education meeting, that was all we've seen thus far, and I've not seen any additional reports develop as a result of that. I would say that there are a number of ways to, for the state or, or the legislature to explain away what it believes is its authority to capture some of those dollars, and so I think we'll, we'll see some of those, those types of comments as well in the coming, in the coming weeks.
I would just say, as, as a taxpayer, I voted for my local option budget enhancements. I voted for my, my local, my, my local tax dollars go up to support this institution, and to have that money stolen by the state is a clear, it's theft, and I would think that that would be cause for, quite literally, a taxpayer class action against the state. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, obviously, but I have serious concerns about the state coming in and swiping what we may have left in reserves, not just us as a public institution, but all of the other public institutions that keep reserves for a very specific reason. If the state chooses to late pay, we still have to make payroll, and we still have to keep the lights on and the heater on, and so that's why a lot of public institutions keep large reserves, because we still got to pay the bills, whether or not the state does or not. So, I would just, I encourage everyone to be vigilant on that, and I look forward to an update, obviously, you'll keep an eye on that for us, but as we head into the session, that's something that we need to keep an eye on.
Good, good point. Other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Carter. Appreciate it very much.
The Audit Committee is the next item on the agenda. We met at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, November 4th, and as always, it's a very extensive, detailed meeting. We cover several items. I think in front of you, you have three documents from McClattery, McClattery on the audit for the year. You have a report to the board, the financial report, and compliance report, and I've asked Mr., our Trustee Musil to go through the audit report for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to go through it in any detail because I would mess it up. Barbara or Dawn, can you give you detail? The key points to take from it were that our compliance audit indicate that we're in compliance with all of our obligations under state or federal law as regards to accounting for various funds. Our audit was deemed to be unmodified, which is what I used to, we used to call unqualified, which means there isn't a problem with it. We're keeping track of our funds properly. We know where the money comes from and where the money goes, and if there are other questions or comments, I direct them to either Dr. Larson or Dawn for specifics, but the audit was clean.
Dr. Sobchak has a comment, I think, to make before we take?
Thank you, Trustee Musil. The, I just want to mention that the quality of these audits reflect incredible work of staff and to keep everything running very smoothly on the financial side. Please note that not every organization, not every institution is so gifted to have such reports like this, so we're very fortunate. I just, our staff, you know, Dawn, Janelle's here, everyone works together to do an excellent job of working with the outside auditors, pull this stuff together.
I mentioned at the Audit Committee that when I look at an audit report, the, the one thing I look at most carefully is, is there any problem between the auditor and the institution in working with people to get the data? Because if there's an issue there, then we've got other issues probably, and there clearly was no issue here, and it was reported that way in the, in the documents that the auditors had very good things to say about how our staff works, how our systems are set up, and that is a, a compliment to our staff from the top to the bottom of people that take care of our money, so, thank you.
We may just want to raise the issue, is, does, do we put this out for bid next year with McClattery, or do we?
We do.
Okay, so there we go.
We'll have the RFP out in the spring.
Okay, great.
Yeah, before we move to the rest of the audit report, let's deal with the audit. Trustee Stewart?
Are you talking about the compliance report too separately, or just the audit?
We're going to talk about that a little bit later, but if you have a question about that as related to...
I was just going to comment, look, and I just glanced over it, and for the, the number of rules and regulations that the college has to follow in relation to federal compliance, I, that was outstanding. There's only two very minor circumstances in there. One was six, amounted to $60, which is pretty minor in the whole scope of things, but I think in the past, we've occasionally had something on there. I just want to commend everyone for the job they've done on this, and, and I know they keep throwing more rules at us every year, so thank you for the hard work and...
Trustee Stewart, it's interesting you should raise that issue. We did spend time, in fact, McClattery spent considerable time at our meeting talking about how well we've done in those several compliance issues and regulations.
It's not easy.
They were very complimentary of our staff, and thank you for bringing that up. Before we move on, we do have an action item. Trustee Musil?
It is a recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the administration's recommendation to accept the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2014, and I would so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Proceed, please.
The Audit Committee, we meet quarterly, so we do cover a lot of ground in the, in the meetings. The next thing we, we had was an update on our, on quarterly activity, quarterly projects update, both from internal audits and what internal audit is doing, information security with respect to our IT systems. We looked at, they have a very complicated matrix of all the things that have been done in the past and that we're working on, and whether they're completed, what the timeframe is, what, what the status is. We got a report on the ethics report line for the reports submitted in the last quarter, ethics point, ethic... Ethics Point, Ethics Report Line is, is our method on campus to, to report concerns, or complaints, or criticisms, or whatever you have about either financial, or employment, or discrimination, or harassment claims, so that they can be handled, and you can report either anonymously or identify yourself. We look at those each quarter, we, we look at Behavioral Intervention Team, the COPS Watch Team, where we look at generally faculty reporting on whether they have a student or another faculty, or a staff member that is displaying some kind of behavior that might cause questions and indicate that they need some support or additional help. We did a follow-up report on the Clary Act, which is the act, federal act requiring us to report on a daily basis and on an annual basis, but to keep track daily of any crime reports, any kind of criminal activity on the campus. The report also requires us to gather that for any, any criminal activity on adjacent properties and campuses defined as any place where we have activities. So we cover the KU Edwards campus during the time, we have rental space there, we cover the 87th Street campus, we cover the OHEC building, and it is a very, it's really much more complex than, than folks would understand, and, and we, we got a follow-up update on that. The chief and his team have done a great job, Janelle and her team have done a great job, everybody, Tanya, I mean, it's been a, a big effort to make sure we are really ahead of the curve compared to other, I think, higher education institutions. We looked at the committee charter, the proposed audit plan for the upcoming school year, and set our next meeting time for February 5th at 8:00 AM. Final thing I'll mention is that Mr. McDay did a benchmarking, preliminary benchmarking report on our ethics report to try to see how we stack up with other institutions, both for-profit, private, and not-for-profit, and higher education, it's all lumped into one, with respect to people reporting items on campus through Ethics Point that might relate to either a business ethics issue, a misuse of assets, a, an employment discrimination, an employment harassment, those kind of things. And it's a preliminary effort to do that, and I think we're going to work harder and harder to figure out those benchmarking and see if we're really apples to apples, institutions to institutions, and look at our, at our efforts. One of the things we, we talked about was the fact that just because you have fewer reports, doesn't necessarily mean that you're doing a better job. It's very hard to measure this. It might be that people are, don't think it's worth reporting, are afraid to report, or just don't report, so the balance between getting people to report if they have concerns and benchmarking that against others to see how we're doing is really a, a tricky analytical process. And I see our analytical guy and Janelle all, both going, yeah. So, but it's, it's an effort that we're trying to do, and we also learned that the, I don't can't remember the name of the American Audit Association, whatever the international professional group is, are going to start sending members to other campuses to audit the auditors, if you will, so that we have, we ensure our, our professional standards are being implemented well, and I think that's, will just increase the professionalism of our staff, which I'm not sure it can be increased, but having another set of eyes on the work. That's it.
The next item on the agenda is Collegial Steering, and trustee Musil's going to give that report, but I'll let him catch his breath and amplify a couple of things on the audit report. Each of you should have a calendar in front of you. As trustee Musil indicated, we spent some time talking about security awareness. This is kind of a cool calendar in that each month, as we move forward through 15, there are some things for you to be thinking about, whether it's your software, whether it's just safety issues in your workplace. So I would encourage you to use the calendar, it's really a nice job done on reminders of what we should be doing with, with our data and our workplace area. The second point I'd like to make is that as we sit on these committees, as trustees, we don't always get the flavor of what goes on in the committees. And one of the things that I'm feeling really good about is that our internal audit committee, our on-campus internal audit team, has really been positive about how well the departments work with them when they go in for an audit purpose. I, I believe that, trustee Musil mentioned the, the relationship between our team and an external audit, but I'm very pleased of how the departments work with our internal audits for improvement, and I think we can all be very pleased about that. Any questions about all of the audit information we had?
You know, I'll just comment on the, the way the auditor gets along with the, the rest of the college campus. That's a tribute to Janelle and the way she does that. I have a lot of experience in auditors, and in fact, they usually aren't welcomed into areas for one reason or another, so you have to have the right kind of personality and, to be able to do that. So I commend Janelle on a great job in leading that department.
Thank you, trustee Stewart. The other item, one of the items we talked about was the Ethics Point, and Collegial Steering did meet on November 11th. I happened to miss that meeting, and trustee Musil conducted that meeting, so Collegial Steering, trustee Musil.
Well, I, I will notice that, after the Audit Committee, when Janelle walked out, I noticed she had a kick-me sign on her back. I don't, I don't know who put it there, but there was that. We, in Collegial Steering on the 11th, we did talk about Ethics Point. My question to the faculty and staff, cabinet members that were there, was how, how much do we know about it? Do you know it's there? Do people use it? Are we advertising it, communicating it to our, our faculty and staff and students? And we learned that there are probably some gaps that we need to fix, that we need to do a better job of letting people know that Ethics Point is out there, that you can report anonymously, that our, our benchmarking showed that we are, we respond and close most cases, I think our average was 20, 20 or 22 days, some last longer. We talked about some of the issues with the fact that if it is a personnel issue, we're not going to be able to tell the complaining witness exactly what happened, because it's a personnel matter, and so that's a frustration, but it's a, it's a legal matter that we have to keep certain things confidential. And it wasn't, within a couple of days, we have a plan in place to make sure that we are doing a better job of advertising throughout the campus that Ethics Point exists, and it is available for people's use. And the more we communicate it, if our numbers still stay low, that will indicate we're really, we have a really robust plan, we don't have as many problems. So, and I, maybe Ron or, Ron will report on that, or Deb, Deb, I know wasn't able to make the Collegial Steering, but report if I'm suggesting that we, I think we have a good plan to make sure people know about it, and it's not an afterthought, because we put a lot of time and effort into Ethics Point. If, if there is a complaint against a board member, or, or if there's a complaint against the president, it comes directly to the board, it doesn't go, doesn't go to the president. If there's a complaint about a board member, there is a process for that. So it is really an effort to build some confidence that if you have a complaint, it will be reviewed. If it's just a judgment call, and then you might not get the result you want, but there's a, there's a mechanism on this campus to make sure we give people an outlet for concerns that they have about how the campus is run.
Okay, questions or comments? Thank you, trustee Musil. Human Resources is the next item. Dr. Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our committee met November 3rd at 9:30. A large group of us were there, and we covered three major items. The first was a performance management discussion, and we reviewed the system, performance management system that was implemented in the fall of 2013. Just as review, this ties the individual performance of our staff to our strategic objectives and our key performance indicators, as well as providing meaningful feedback to our employees. We, we talked for quite a while about that, and got a really nice update. It seems to be working, it's still in its early phases, but I think we're already getting good results, and, and of course, we're fine-tuning as we go along, but I think it's a really good system, and I think it will help us as we move forward. The second item was tobacco and smoke-free campus policy. That will be discussed in further detail with learning quality, and I think they'll be bringing us a recommendation. And then our final item was, we briefly talked about the staffing tables you have on your consent agenda, the official report. We received the tentative report in the August board meeting, but this is the revised one that's in your consent agenda, and we covered all of this, and we ended at a prompt time, so we glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Dr. Drummond? Thank you, trustee Drummond. Learning Quality, trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee meeting occurred on November 3rd, 2014, in this room. Trustee Lindstrom and I were present, along with Dr. Sopchak and, and many others. There are several presentations, and we have one recommendation to make to the full board tonight. Clarissa Craig presented an agreement for review between the college and St. Joseph Medical Center, Carondelet Health. The traditional agreement will span four years, and will support the registered nursing programs, specifically the obstetrics specialty area. The agreement has been reviewed by legal and may be moved forward for full board approval. Beth Edmonds, Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, presented curriculum items that were recently approved by the Educational Affairs Committee, and is now requesting approval from the full board. Changes including the addition of new courses, modifications, and deletions were approved as presented. A complete list of curriculum changes can be found in the November 20th board packet. Foresight 2020 was adopted by the Kansas Board of Regents in 2010 and updated in 2012. The plan's aspirations are to increase to 60% the number of Kansas adults who have a certificate, associate degree, or bachelor's degree, and also to achieve a 10% increase in retention and graduation rates by 2020. Complete information can be found on the K-Board website at www.kansasregents.org, and the plan directly affects what we do as we develop and modify curriculum. Our challenge is to try to build certificates that lead to degrees and, and help students can, complete what they're studying, so they can, you know, have a better life. Transfer and articulation information can also be found on the K-Board website. Forty-six courses have been aligned and will transfer seamlessly for full credit to any institutions of higher learning in the state of Kansas. Of course, transfer badge will be used to show which courses across the state have been approved, and outcomes and symbols are now being developed that will be published in catalogs across the state. Board of Regents is moving to align courses and establish programs so students can complete in four years. The JCCC transfer information and services side includes transfer program guides that show all institutions in higher education, with which we have agreements and displays courses, displays course-by-course alignment to help students graduate efficiently. The college has 200 curriculum guides with institutions across the state of Kansas. A reverse transfer agreement will allow students to complete a degree at the college by sending credits earned at the transfer institution back to JCCC. Andy stated that an SB 155 shared funding agreement will go before Management Committee on November 5th, and excuse me, it's Andy Anderson. Aletha and Blue Valley are on board with this agreement, and he expects an increase in enrollment due to the number of high school students who will continue their education at the college to complete their technical education degree. Dr. Day shared that the state and federal language was used to revise JCCC's no-smoking policy to include electronic cigarettes. E-cigarettes will be considered a tobacco product and can only be smoked in the smoking hut or in personal vehicles. Trustee Lee Cross made a motion to approve the recommendation below, and trustee David Lindstrom graciously seconded the motion. So we have a report that the HR Now and Learning Quality Committees have reviewed this, proposed revisions to the tobacco-free campus policy, which establishes restrictions for the use of tobacco and related products at the college. The proposed revisions rename the policy to the tobacco and smoke-free campus policy and clarify the products that are subject to the restriction, for example, electronic cigarettes. And I almost said including, but not limited to, but I don't know if it was somebody on this board that told me to stop saying that, but electronic cigarettes. So therefore, Mr. Chair, we have the recommendation that the Learning Quality Committee recommends to the Board of Trustees to accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the revisions to the tobacco and smoke-free campus policy as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second regarding the tobacco policy, which includes electronic cigarettes. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments?
If I may add, I grew up the, the son of smokers, and I know how troubling it can be to live with smoke, having had the, probably not unique experience, but just that experience, and I, I welcome this, this policy, Mr. President, and I commend you and your administration for doing so, so.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other questions of trustee Cross regarding his report? I would say that Senate Bill 155 continues to be a high priority of the governor. The program retention and completion with the 2020 project was heavily discussed at ACCT, we'll have a report on that perhaps later, but really appreciate the college taking activity in both the 2020, Foresight 2020, and graduation completion and retention. Okay. Management, trustee Musil.
I'm reminded that we, we have, again, we, we kick around names and numbers and abbreviations like K-Board and Senate Bill 155 and Foresight 2020 that anybody, maybe some people in the audience don't even know, let alone people up on the screen, but we get into our, our routine of Kansas Board of Regents being K-Board, et cetera. Senate, because I have to, Senate Bill 155, I always have to think what that is, that is technical education funding that the, the Kansas Legislature passed last year that allows us to have some additional funding for technical education that we teach here of high school students. And the shared funding agreement is that we will share some of those benefits with the high schools themselves who send us students.
That's right.
And that's what we discussed at Management Committee meeting, and it's, it's the first action item, it's the recommendation of the Management Committee of the Board of Trustees, that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve shared funding agreements between Johnson County Community College and participating high schools in Johnson County who have students to that, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or discussion? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second action item is a bid, review, and recommendation. The first one is a, in response to a request for proposal to contract for an enterprise data warehouse solution designed for improved analytics, trend information, automation, and integration of the college's various data sources. Everybody got that? Patrick gave a great presentation in PowerPoint to kind of explain that this warehouse will set on top of some other data sources, collect information, allow the average person on campus, non-trustee average, what I'm talking about, to then pull data and analyze it and use that for enrollment trends or other pieces of information that they, they need. And Patrick is here to, and Denise could help explain why we need that. It seemed pretty obvious that we need a solution that allows us to use, we have lots of data, we can't get to it easily, we have to use program analysts to analyze it as a third party, and if we can do that directly from your desk, whether you're a professor or a cabinet member or a staff member, you will be able to do it more efficiently. And this would be the schedule, this would be to enter into an annual contract price in addition to purchasing the actual enterprise data warehouse solution. I will note, this was not the low bid, as you read your packet. This is technology, it's finding the right solution, the one that works for this college and will work best for our, our people on this college. There was a large committee, as you'll note, SB is on page 13 or 14 of your board packet, a large committee that reviewed it. I think what we heard at the end of the meeting was that the consensus was this was the best solution for Johnson County Community College. And so based on that, it is a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the proposal of $289,790 from Zogo Technologies LLC for the purchase of an enterprise data warehouse solution, and I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just anecdotally, I wish that the public could see the looks on the faces of the IT team watching Greg attempt to explain what this does. It's quite entertaining. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, but I do believe the staff thoroughly understands the program and is not confused with that explanation.
Even if it's wrong.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add that because of the paranormal, peril, paranormal state of some of our trustees, we probably don't need this. It's good for the staff.
Any other questions or helpful comments? We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah, the next action item, I do actually understand. It is a bid for printing of the continuing education schedules so that they can be sent out in hard copy to people to sign up for continuing education courses. It is, I do believe it was a low bid. It was a low bid. So it's a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the college administration's recommendation to approve the low bid of $161,544 from Walsworth Publishing Company, Inc., for the annual prize contract for printing continuing education schedules, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any question, trustee Stewart?
Comment. I, you know, question sometimes why we need to spend money on paper when everything's moving to internet, and I shared this in the Management Committee. The night before the Management Committee, that catalog was mailed to my house, and I went through and looked at it, and I think I enrolled in four classes that I would have never probably picked up on by going to the internet. So there is still, I think, pretty considerable value in that, and I'm very disappointed that one of the classes that I enrolled in, country's two-step dancing, the instructor had a medical issue and they had to cancel the class in January. So if you're a country two-step instructor, you should contact the college because there is a position here for you to fill, so.
If any of you in the listening audience would like to tutor one-on-one the two-step dance, call as well.
I have more.
I believe, did we?
We don't need a vote.
We have a motion and a second on a printing. Any other comments or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The Management Committee also received a very helpful report from Darcy McGrath on grant activities. Again, the Management Committee is trying to look at a different area of the campus every month. That we looked at auxiliary services, and this month it was grants to see how they, how we apply for grants, what we look for to partner, what our shared obligation is, and how they fit with our strategic plan. And it was a very helpful report, at least to me. Don Perkins reported on our investments in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. It was not a good report, but next month will be better because the markets are doing better. Mitch Borders presented, Borchers presented the Soul Source Report, as well as a summary of awarded bids between $25,000 and $100,000. That summary is on page 12 of the Board Packet. And Rex Hayes gave his monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and that report is on page 17 of the Packet. And unless there are questions, Mr. Chair, that completes my report of the Management Committee for this month.
Thank you. Any further questions of trustee Musso? Appreciate it. Hopefully you can have a little rest. Now, you've been working pretty hard tonight.
Double my pay.
Double your pay. President's Recommendations, Treasurers Report, trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to present the Treasurers' Report for the month ending September 30th, 2014. It can be found on pages 20 to page 31 of your packets. Briefly, here are a few highlights. On page 30, at the bottom of the page, please note the fund balances. As of September 30th, we had a book balance of $86.4 million, with $14.4 million in outstanding encumbrances, leaving us unencumbered balance of $71.5 million. Ad valorem distribution of $3.975 million was received during the month. The college made 10 of 20 on the, made payment 10 of 20 on the Series 2009 Certificates of Participation in the amount of $1,679,385. Expenditures in the primary operating fund are within approved budgetary limits, and therefore it is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ending September 2014, subject to audit, and I would make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. We are going to go to the lightning round. Before you, you have 28 pages of, from the President's Report, report to the Board here of activities and things that have happened across campus. I'll be going into a little bit more detail in a few minutes, but first, we'd like to have Dr. Korbe take us in the first step of the lightning round.
Okay, well, we were going through the number. Every month, we sit down and we go through all the numbers and everything for continuing education on where we are with, you know, revenue and all those things. And we're excited to be able to report that revenue numbers are way up against what we projected that they would be. Now, all of the expenses are not in, so we don't really have the retained revenue numbers yet, but revenue is up, and it's due partly to increased activity with Burlington Northern. That's one of the, one of the reasons that it's up. But anyway, so we would anticipate that retained revenue would be up as well. But one of the things that they did this past month was a Microsoft conference, and so they partnered with Microsoft. Microsoft sent a keynote speaker, and then there were other speakers from about 10 other companies. Around 100 people participated in the event, and about 35 different companies were represented. And so it was just a really cool event that, one of the things that they were really excited about was it was highlighted with companies that we haven't necessarily worked with a lot in the past. So they came to campus, they were able to get all the information from the conference, and hopefully those are a lot of really good new connections for us, so.
Dr. Day.
Good evening. November 10th, we had a wonderful occasion where we opened up a veteran center. It was, some of you attended the opening, and throughout the day, we had a number of community members and folks from service industry or service academies come and visit the center. Most of you didn't get to stay as long as I did because I'm just down the hallway and I had nothing else to do that day. But it was really wonderful to talk with the representatives from each of the service areas about what this veteran center means on this campus and to the veterans and the students that are a part of it. And then toward the end of the afternoon, as things were winding down, there's a lounge in the veteran center, and students gathered there. And that was really kind of the icing on the cake because that's what it was about. It was the connection that they had, and they were sharing that. So thank you for your participation, and it was a really wonderful occasion. You also brought up about, yes, sir?
Can I make one comment? Because I was there, and I was really impressed with the ceremonies, and also, most importantly, there was a couple there who had lost their son, and they made a, what I consider to be a pretty significant contribution from a foundation that they set up of $12,500. And they were a very remarkable couple who lost their son in Afghanistan, I believe.
In fact, their foundation has contributed almost, I believe, over $50,000 to this institution alone.
It's the veterans and military students.
Resource center.
Resource center. So it's, you know, it's, we have students who are serving in the military today or in the reserves that go there as well. And what I, I know this is an important support area for them and a recognition, and what I, I think we all have the challenge is making sure that we then integrate them with that support into the full student body and the full campus activities. Every time I hear about all the groups that Jeff mentioned, you gotta, you need to be involved in a group, but you can't be isolated in a group.
Absolutely.
And the veterans that we met there, I am confident will not be because they're very outgoing and very, very energetic and enthused about the center. I think you two have, deserve a lot of credit for getting that done. Thank you.
They have a very good staff that put that together. You talked about compliance, and one of the things we did last week, toward the end of the last week, we also had a bystander training, which is something that we have to do through a federal initiative. Dean Paul Kyle got the idea, instead of having to pay for this training, why not have a conference and invite other folks in and help let them pay for it as well? So it was very entrepreneurial on his part. We had over 200 people come in from a five-state region, a lot of institutions, be a part of the bystander training, and it coupled with, a couple from Janus Campaign put on a Heartland Safety Summit, which was attended by 230 individuals from 30, or 35, oh, sorry, nine states and 85 institutions of higher education throughout the region. And this was put on to help them be in compliance with their training as well. So it was, it's just a nice way to turn around a mandate into a opportunity to allow us to get training and let others in sharing that as well. And we may see that come out of the White House. That summit that they had was attended by the Department of Education, Civil Rights, and their branches, and there may be something coming from the White House on that. Thirdly, I just want to kudos to Paul Kyle for doing that, but also he, it was just announced today that he was elected president-elect of ACRO, which is the Association of College Registarians and Admissions Officers. This is a 20,000-member organization. He is only the fourth member in 104 years from a community college to be elected president-elect for this organization. It's quite an honor for him. And then lastly, I can't go on without talking about our own juggernaut basketball team that we have. Our women's basketball team has, is 7-0. They'll be playing in Massachusetts on Sunday. They have won their games on an average of about 60 points spread on each of their games so far.
What are they, Kentucky?
Oh, sorry, John.
I wasn't going to bring up what state they came, but they're our own juggernaut, and hopefully they'll, their number four standing might improve because we're going to be playing the number two school in the country in Massachusetts.
Where in Massachusetts are they playing?
It's, the name of the school is, it's in Franklin, Massachusetts, and it's Dean College. And they are also 7-0, and they've also been quite a juggernaut.
Dr. Day, thank you. Please forgive my ignorance, but help me understand a little more detail what bystanders is about. What is that?
Bystander training is, if you see something, you do something, and how do you do that? And at no jeopardy to yourself. We have a responsibility to train a certain number of students on campus to help out with sexual abuse and sexual assault witnessing.
Okay.
So if, we have a responsibility not only to report, but we're trying to train students to be more aware and what to do in case they see it as well. I'm going to use a school in the Big Ten that got caught, and rightfully so. And there were a number of people, not only in the staff, but there were students that knew what was going on and did not report it, or that knew what was going on and did not do something about it. So these federal mandates are coming out of those types of cases. And if we don't do something, then the federal government will come in and find us and do some other things too. And a couple of us will be out of a job.
Is that compliance basically for public institutions?
Basically.
The reason I say that, I was fueling up my car today at a gas station in the neighborhood, and as I pulled up, I smelled something wrong when I got out of my car, and I started fueling my car, and in the receptacle, smoke was coming out of it.
Oh, my gosh.
And I'm, I look inside, and I couldn't see flames, but the smoke was getting greater and greater, and obviously something had ignited in there. And I was trying to decide whether I finished fueling up my car, or if I go inside, luckily there was a fella next door in a van.
It could have been chair.
And I said, I think we have a problem here. There's smoke. Well, he happened to have a fire extinguisher in his van. I guess my point is, had I driven away?
Right.
And cameras would have recorded that, and when I left, it blew up and killed somebody. Would a citizen be held accountable for violating a bystander observation, if I understand?
Well, in this case, it is for sexual abuse and sexual assault. And any institution that gets Title IV federal funds, which is federal aid, must be in compliance. And the reason we get these good going audit reports is because a lot of people are looking at how the rules are, and we get into this type of training. In your case, it would have been, you would have been, well, the lawyer next to you would have been able to get a case of the person that got burned because you didn't do anything about it. I would, on a civil side. I don't know that there was a criminal negligence on your part, unless it was your cigarette and you, instead of putting some water on it, took the hose and poured into it. But that was a legal opinion, and I shouldn't be giving that, so.
Thank you, Dennis, and thank you, Dr. Korbe, and let's get.
That's the essence of lightning there.
And back to the lightning round. Dr. Larson.
Thank you. I wanted to highlight an operational change in our housekeeping shifts. Although we have had some housekeeping staff on campus during the days, the majority of our cleaning has occurred during the third shift overnight. And beginning in January, all cleaning will take place between 5:00 a.m. and midnight. We communicated with a number of other colleges and universities who have, that have converted to daytime cleaning, and they've reported real benefits, greater communication and collaboration between custodial staff and other faculty and staff. And in addition, housekeeping staff will be able to participate in activities that are held on campus during the day and during the evenings that previously they could not. To prepare for this change, we had a number of meetings with housekeeping staff and with campus groups, the deans council, room schedulers, performing arts, to name a few. And based on these discussions, we're confident that we can maintain our current cleaning standards during these new hours. Every housekeeping staff member who wished to make the change has a place on a new shift, either one that begins at 5:00 a.m. or at 3:30 p.m. In addition to the benefits anticipated through greater collaboration and communication with campus, with campus colleagues, we expect to realize energy savings with buildings being placed in unoccupied modes during those nighttime hours now. Conservatively, we estimate electricity savings of approximately $125,000 per year. I want to thank everyone involved in planning for this change, especially the housekeeping staff and their supervisors and the human resources staff. We see this as a real positive change for, for the college community. Thank you.
Denise Moore.
Thank you. Mine is going to be really easy and quick. What I'm going to do is update you on the Classroom Emergency Communications Project. If you remember back in the spring, we talked about putting phones in classrooms, and we had a discussion in the Management Committee, and after that, we did some research, find out what other schools are doing, what the trends are in higher education, as well as what some of the best practices are. So as a result of that, a decision was made to extend the existing Cisco voice-over-IP infrastructure that we've already put in place at the college. Not only does that put telephones in classrooms, but it gives us other capabilities. It extends our P.A. system. And by that, we can supplement and use those phones as P.A. systems into, into the classrooms because on occasion, we'd hear that some parts of some buildings are in classrooms when doors are shut, they're not hearing the building P.A. systems. But also, another benefit is that we can broadcast emergency notifications back to the dispatch from the phones in the classroom, and that we're able to also use this for localized P.A. systems. For instance, in the child center, if they want to use that as just a P.A. system within the center, whether it's an emergency or non-emergency, it can be used in that way. And then it's also giving us the opportunity to evaluate this system as a viable alternative to putting P.A. systems in buildings or areas that don't already have them. And then unlike analog phones, we can manage these phones, these digital phones centrally on networks, since they are digital, not analog. And then if we look further into the future, we can get, there is capability to be able to integrate these systems with some of our other systems like fire alarms and door locks and things like that. The funding for this project came from the Technology Infrastructure Fee Fund, and the progress to date is we're about 95% complete. All but a handful of phones have already been installed in the 300 identified learning spaces across campus. The software- The software that's going to enable the P.A. system has been installed and configured, and testing is in progress. It will be scheduled, or the scheduled completion is on track for the beginning of the spring semester. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise, and also to you, Barbara. I'm going to kind of wrap things up here with, with a few comments. First, we're going to talk about enrollment. Enrollment is something that we watch very closely. We send out a report that goes to 41 people across campus, including faculty leadership, so they can track the progress of enrollment during the semester. And if you, and as we look ahead to the spring, and it's still very, very early, but total headcount is down by .4 or less than one-half a percent. At this point in time, that breaks down to about 35 students. Total credit hours are down about .9%, less than 1%. So obviously, we have our work cut out for us, but the fact that we're watching this almost on a daily basis will be very helpful. Put it in perspective, last spring, last spring semester, we experienced a 4.8% decline in overall headcount and a 6.5% decline in on-campus headcount. That's when we implemented some of the, some of the changes here that positively affected summer enrollment and fall enrollment, and pretty much brought us up to speed as we're trying to stop those declines. So we feel pretty confident about the future, and we'll be watching the spring very closely. I'd like to add a little bit to Trustee Lindstrom's Treasurer's Report. And again, this is after one-quarter of numbers, and you all get the Treasurer's Report. But total revenue is up versus a year ago, about .7% or $218,000. This is driven by an increase in tuition and fees. While tuition, while the number of students we have here and the credit hours may be relatively flat, we did increase the cost of tuition, and that's contributed to that increase. Our total expenses are up about 1.2%, but that's being driven by increased expenditures in current operating and capital items. Our salaries and benefits are down 1.5% over the first three months. So this is another opportunity for us to keep track of this closely as the year goes on. Fundraising. Over the past couple of months, the foundation has conducted several special events. Now, when the foundation does something on campus, it represents a campus-wide effort as so many different parts of the campus get called into this. But gross revenues for those two events was 768,000 with a net of 580,000. So congratulations to everybody involved. Trustee Sharp will be speaking a little bit more to that in her report. But if you think about, about it, and many of you were at some enchanted evening, if not all of you, that event netted over $400,000. That's 400 $1,000 scholarships that can make a huge difference for our students. So that event was, was very, very productive. Now, here are some of the highlights that you can find in those 28 pages of the monthly report. First, on page nine, there's a section there about our Emergency Medical Sciences. The class of 2013, they did a 10, a 10-month placement survey data. I wanted to see what people were doing after 10 months. 19 of 20 graduates were working as paramedics. 19 out of 20, that's about 95%. 17 of those are full-time. 17 of the 19 are working, are employed in the greater Kansas City metro area. One's employed in rural Kansas. This program is so popular that for 2015, we've received 76 applicants for 24 available seats. So this program makes a strong contribution to our community. If you read on in the report on page 15, you'll see a section about continuing education. In the month of September, 2,207 students were enrolled in 188 non-credit classes. 45 students were enrolled in 32 non-credit online classes. Now, here's another number for you. 322 students were enrolled in 31 non-credit CLEAR classes. CLEAR is the College Learning Experience activities and resources for adults with minor developmental challenges. Their graduation ceremony will be coming up in December. If you have the chance to attend it, I strongly urge that you do. It's one of the finest things we do here at Johnson County Community College. On page 19, the police department. Since October 1st, our police department received 1,888 calls for service. 10 of those were injury slash medical emergency calls. And Dennis talked about our Veterans Center. I want to recognize Kenneth Zumwalt, John Bolander, Paul Kyle, and Dennis Day for their relentless pursuit of trying to expand the service space we have for our veterans. This wouldn't have happened without their, I can say, dogged advocacy. I'd also like to thank all those who were relocated to make it work. If you've been up to the third floor, you've seen the space. It's nothing extravagant, I can tell you. It's very modest. But from the IR group to the faculty who willingly moved from their offices, everybody was a part of this successful initiative. And if you get a chance, drop by the office. I took a veteran up there the other day, and to meet those student, or veterans, is really an energizing experience. I say all this because recently, the comment was made that government workers don't produce anything. Well, we all get our checks from the taxpayer, so I guess that makes us all government workers. I think it's important that everyone here on campus and everyone here at this meeting knows that we produce a lot. This college has been producing for this community for nearly 50 years. We have a rich legacy of production. It's verified by our alumni, their successes and their contributions to this community. It's verified by the continued pursuit of education and technical training experienced by thousands on our campus on a daily basis. And it's verified by the efforts on this campus and the contributions to our community by the 2,500 full-time and part-time employees who are committed to community service. The examples mentioned earlier all represent production to this community, as evidenced by the work of our paramedics that they perform. If you're in an accident and you need help, I can guarantee you, they're going to be productive. The families and the individuals that participate in CLEAR, ask a family member sometime what CLEAR means to them and the productivity that emerges from that. The people who are assisted in exemplary fashion by our police department on a daily basis. Should have been here for the lockdown. You would have seen police from Overland Park, from the Johnson County sheriffs, from the Highway Patrol, running through these hallways with their rifles ready to go, not knowing what was around every corner or behind any door. They were highly productive that day. And the contributions to our community that our veterans make after they utilize our campus, these are just very few examples of productivity here at Johnson County Community College. I could go on and on. And so do our campus community at Johnson County Community College. I want to thank you for your productivity, and I want to thank you for your continued service to our community. And that wraps up my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sobchak. I would just make a couple of comments. Thanks for the detail. We're all aware of November as being Veterans Day and Veterans Month. As Trustee Lindstrom, I appreciated your remarks about the family, and Dr. Day, I thank you for your determination with the team to get that done. But it's apparent that we emphasize veterans every day and their contribution to each other and to this country. So that, that was, that was, that's, that's very good to hear, and I'm proud of what this college does in that regard. If you have not attended a CLEAR ceremony, I've had a chance to speak at that ceremony, and it really is a learning experience for you, and, and I would encourage all of you to try to attend one in your lifetime, at least before you leave as a trustee or you leave the community. It's a fabulous program, and it means an awful lot to a lot of people. Any reactions or comments of any of the trustees? Thank you, thank you, Dr. Sobchak. Any old business? I would say that each of you have these cards. This may not be the time to talk about it, but Julie, thank you very much for updating the detail of these cards. Dr. Drummond is going to speak momentarily about ACCT, but when I talk to other trustees around the country and ask them these kinds of questions, they, they really aren't as knowledgeable as perhaps they should be. So, so as an example, when we look at the money and the budget, Advilorium 53%, tuition 23%, state aid 15%, those are our top three sources. I was at a luncheon the other day when someone asked, well, just exactly where does the revenue come from for the college? And, and these were very, very helpful. I use them often. So Julie, thank you very much for updating them. I, I do, and you've added the facilities page in here, so it's kind of helpful to know where the buildings are, even though we've been on the trustees for a while. And also, our key performance indicators are there, so I would encourage you to take them with you, use them, refresh yourselves with them, they're very, very helpful. Any old business? Any new business? Reports from Board Liaisons, Faculty Association, I think Ron Polsick, you're up.
Already? Just watching a football game.
Well, give us a report.
Zero, zero.
Good.
K-State got penalized 15 yards.
That's wrong.
It was after a 26-yard pass, but...
Do you have any other comments, Mr. Polsick?
I'd like to get home.
See how good he is, Deb? This guy's good.
Would you take one? Sure, thanks. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Let me set up my score, so if I start cheering, because K-State scored. Like I always talk with my reports, is with a joke. I have to tell you, it's a joke because you might not laugh. My report will be shorter than normal because it's getting really close. Whoops, scarry. It's already past the kickoff for the K-State game, but I got to get home for the Chiefs game tonight at 7:00. So enjoy this with my family. Some enchanted evening. I'd like to make a short report about that. I had the privilege of honoring and honored to represent the Faculty Association along with another colleague of mine, his husband, and her husband, excuse me. And it was a wonderful evening. And I want to tell you, your board members clean up very nicely. You look very nice. I even got a picture of Jon Stewart. If anybody wants to see it, see me, it's on my phone. It was a wonderful event. It was an event I encourage everyone to get involved in to, and to attend. The scholarship for students is outstanding. Anything for our students that we want to do. A quick report, Greg Musel, Trustee Musel, about the ethic point. We are in contact with administration. I've had some conversation. We're in the midst of coming up with a mechanism to get out to the faculty and to other staff more information about that. Hopefully not to encourage more reports, but to make sure that they know it exists. And I have to trust that I honestly said I did not know it existed. So that's in the works. Second, I was, I'm privileged to be on the ALATHA Public Schools Site Council, and we had a long meeting last night, or Tuesday night. And at that meeting, I wanted to make a report that Johnson County Community College was talked about. And they have adopted the Alice program. And they adopted it because of what we did, and we invited their Chief of Security to our campus, and I was lucky enough to be at that training, to be a trainer of Alice here at the college. And so he took it back to the community. They brought in the same group of people we brought in. They have adopted it for their K through 12 standards. They are excited, and when they did their PowerPoint, they had up there all of these support agencies from all the police officers, police department, Kansas Highway Patrol, all this, and Johnson County Community College, and they spoke a great deal about us and our leadership. So thank you very much for doing that, for protecting my children as well. Also, the last thing I want to talk about is we are hosting, at the end of the year, the Faculty Association, our end-of-the-semester celebration. We always have it on the last day of the class before final exam, which I'm inviting you all on December 5th to attend. Starts at 4:00. But we've changed it a bit. This is not going to be the typical celebration, and I sent out a flyer, and I have flyers here for the rest of you, and I'm going to place them on the table if you're interested. We have a member of our community who's in need of a heart. She needs a heart transplant to survive. She's living on a external heart pump right now. She has a small child, she's young, and you see by the flyer with its information. We, the Faculty Association, decided that we give a lot of money to run this party. And so we have decided to take the money that we would have normally bought the food, and we're going to donate it to her for it. And we're going to have food there, we're still going to. We're having a potluck, and if you know anything about potluck with faculty, it'll probably be a lot more food than normal. So please come and bring some Tupperware, she can take some home. I wanted to let you know personally, my family and I, Kimberly, my two children, we have donated $100 to this fund. We're challenging everybody to give what you can, if you can, at this time. We're trying, they've already raised $16,000. We're trying to hit that 20,000 goal by Thanksgiving, so. I know this is a tough time of year to do this. I have gone through, as you can see on here, you can, you can directly give it to her, you can go through an agency called the NFT, and that information is right there. And I wanted to let you know that for every $100 you donate, $97 will go to her fund. There's only a 3% over, overhead. And I know that because I had my wife check. She always checks those things thoroughly. And so this fundraiser is for Melissa Wells, and it's going to be called the Faculty Association Holiday Pot, Party Potluck Chili Cook-Off. And I hope you all can come to it. Is there any questions for me?
Where's that going to be, Ron?
It's going to be at Quavera Falls, and we will send you all an email invitation.
Thank you. I see that.
You're welcome. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry, the score went off. Oh, I better leave. K-State's a head six, nothing.
Any questions for Mr. Polsick? Thank you, Ron, appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Johnson County Research Triangle, Mr. Musel.
We're going to have a special meeting Monday morning at 7:30 a.m. to receive the final report of our auditors. They went back after a preliminary report to clarify some additional numbers, but there aren't any problems, all the, we know where all the money is, and we know where it came from, and it's some reporting requirements. So we'll have that report, and sales tax revenues continue to come in slightly ahead of last year. So that's my report.
Thank you. KACC has not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is December 7th and 8th in Fort Scott. Originally, Trustee Lindstrom and was going to attend. In fact, Trustee Lindstrom gave up an opportunity tonight to be with the team and the Chiefs in Oakland. He had been invited to attend and gave that up to be with us. However, he, his discipline is weak, and he was invited to go to Phoenix the same time we're going to Fort Scott. Phoenix, Fort Scott. Anyway, we'll miss you there, but Trustee Musel and I will be attending with Dr. Sobchak.
I didn't know there was a choice.
And there was, Phoenix or Fort Scott. Any event, we'll be there. But, but I would like to take this time to ask Dr. Drummond to give a little report on ACCT. Dr. Drummond, Dr. Sobchak, Patrick Rossall Allison, and I attended ACCT in Chicago. I would also say that Patrick and Dr. Sobchak led a presentation, and Patrick also chaired another presentation of some of the top, what would that be called? Patrick, not performance, but Performance Funding?
Yeah.
And both sessions were packed, and Patrick was swarmed after each session to get more information, and I think you've had considerable follow-ups since then. The four of us have debriefed the event. Dr. Drummond's going to give a little report on that debriefing. And I think what we're, we're challenging all the trustees on, as we travel forward to other events, the expectation is to come back and give some kind of recommendation as to how that experience can lead to strategies which will improve our teaching and learning process at this college. So it's not just a matter of going to a convention and saying, I attended. We're going to ask you to tell us how we can learn from that. So in that spirit, Dr. Drummond, if you'd give a little report on ACCT, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. For those in the audience, ACCT stands for the Association of Community College Trustees. And I was privileged, as Dr. Cook said, to attend October 22nd through 25th in Chicago. The name of the conference was Winds of Change: Staying the Course to the American Dream. I found that a little paradoxical because I'm concerned if community colleges stay the course, they might not fulfill the dreams. So I think that's one of the challenges before it, and I'll mention that more in just a second. What I'm going to give you is just a summary of my take, three packed days and evenings of activities, interactions with other trustees, and a lot of presentations, a lot of keynotes, all very, very good, very, very helpful, a lot of information. So I've tried to summarize that into three little pieces that I'll, I'll talk to you about and then bring some questions to you to consider in the days ahead. and then bring some questions to you to consider in the days ahead. One of the themes that was very apparent to me was there's a lot of emphasis on enhancing student success. That title was used in 25 different ways in workshops. If you had a chance, have a chance to read through this, I'll provide it for you. It's in there a lot, and most of the workshops I went to surrounded that even though they were not titled that. So I think that's obviously a great emphasis today. The second theme that I drew from the meetings and some of my own thoughts about the meetings were the question about the relevancy of community colleges in higher education as we respond to the winds of change in education in general, and I'll make more comments about that in a second. The third theme that I was trying to digest was what I talked to, talked with about a lot of different trustees was sustainability of community colleges as we move forward in the current educational environment and the political environment that we all face right now. So as I've wrestled with those themes and thought about the meeting quite a bit, and had discussion with Joe and Jerry and Patrick and a few other people about the conference, I came up with about eight or 10 questions that I would like us as a group to consider in the days ahead. Not tonight, Chiefs play at 7:25, so not tonight, but I think it's something we ought to be serious about, and whether these are the right questions, I'm not sure, but maybe they'll create other questions in your mind about our community college and the future of it. The first question, I asked myself, and now I ask you, what will student success look like for the next generation of students? What will it look like for the next generation? Not just the students we have now, but the next generation of students who I think are going to be different than this generation of students. So how do we quantify and qualify student success? Secondly, how can JCC maintain its relevancy as new modalities of packaging education are pouring out every day? Online education, teleconference, all kinds of education that are occurring, and different ways of presenting education that are before us today, and I suspect there will be many, many more modalities in the future. So what does that do to today's community college? And what will the future look like for the community college in 10 or 15 years from now? Thirdly, how can JCC maintain a strategic plan that helps us to navigate these new modalities as well as the new technology, the change in funding streams, the change in various politics nationally, locally, statewide, and manage increasing costs with decreasing revenue without passing all of that on to our students? I think that's a very critical question for us to consider. Fourthly, I think as we, as we look at all this and other things that we can talk about, what occurs to me, at least in my thinking, is are we as a board organized to address not just the challenges I've suggested here, but many other challenges that I know you think about and we will be facing in the days ahead? Are we organized as a board, as a college, as administration, in order to deal with some of those challenges? I have my thoughts about that, but that's for another time. Fifthly, is there a point where a very generous community will reach its max in terms of supporting a community college? We have a very generous community. Have we reached that point of generosity? Can we continue to tap the community at a higher level or even the same level in order to support Johnson County Community College in the future? Another one that I've learned, having gone to several of these meetings, it kind of haunts me when I, when I compare ourselves to others, we are a very, 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 very good college. But it may be in some cases, we're not quite as good as we think we are. And if there's any truth to that, then how do we get better? Even if we're as good as we think we are, how do we get better? How do we continue to grow as we expect our students to grow and mature? And become as good as we can for the amount of money we're putting into this? How can we be as effective as some of our peers are? Well, I think those are just a few questions. I have many more questions, having come from this meeting and several other meetings across the years. And I think it might be well, Mr. Chairman, that we have a time somewhere to talk about these questions and other questions I undoubtedly believe other trustees have, administration has, and our faculty and staff have, about the relevancy, the future, and what Johnson County Community College will look like in the next 50 years. We're not too far away from celebrating our first 50 years. What are we going to look like in the next 50 years, given all the changes that are around us? Again, I appreciate the opportunity to send me there, and for me to have an opportunity to interact with other trustees and to listen to national speakers. Two last things I would suggest, well, actually just one last thing I would suggest to you. There is an opportunity on the forefront here for us to become more engaged at the national level with the ACCT, and I'll have Mr. Cook talk about that a little bit, but there is an opportunity for him to at least entertain the possibility of being on the national board. And I think we should encourage Dr. Cook to do that, if that opportunity does present itself, and he can become a member of the board, the national board. Because I think that brings a lot of value to Johnson County Community College, to have a representative, which I don't believe we've ever had, on a national board, and develop some more insight about the future of community colleges and bring that back to us. So, thank you, Dr. Cook, and be glad to ask you any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond. A couple of reactions to all of that. In our office, we ask regularly, why do we do what we do? And how can we get better at doing it? And you're all familiar with Jim Collins, if you think you're pretty good, you'll never be great because you think you're good. And I appreciate your challenge, Bob, in terms of looking in the mirror and saying just exactly how effective and good are we? It was really fun for me to watch the interaction of the nation with Patrick. As I watched Patrick tonight, when trustee Musil was giving his report on the technology, he kind of beams passionately when we're talking about metrics and analytics, and how can we be better at the dollars we have? We get, we get in a path of wanting more dollars, and that certainly is important, but are we using the ones we have as effectively as we can use them? And I really appreciate the challenge, what I heard you say, Bob, is a challenge to the trustees, are we thinking as strategically as we should be as trustees? One of the things we're trying to do with the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees is, is improve the trustee presence before they think about running for the trustee position. What do they know about their college before they run? And then as we're trustees, what commitment do we have to become more effective trustees? And that's, that's kind of the spirit, I think, in which I have been approached to consider being on a national board. There are five regions in the nation. We're in the Western region, we're made up of nine states, three Canadian provinces, and two Canadian territories. Each region has three directors elected, or 15. Some directors are elected at large, there are 26 board members nationwide. Bob Feit is a representative from Nebraska, he's going off in 2015, and actually visited with me about my interest in, in representing Kansas. If this board supports that notion, and I would, I would ask for a motion and a second and for you to vote on that, from the viewpoint of there'd be some travel to ACCT at the National Legislative Summit in February, and then the Congress in October. Any campaign expense, of course, would be my own, but if this college then denies that, I understand, and we wouldn't take any further action, but if this board approves that, I will then go to KACC in Fort Scott in December and ask for their endorsement. I would be running against other trustees within the nine state, within the Western region that I've discussed. But if we're serious about trying to become more engaged at the national level, I, I'm flattered about someone from another state asking me if I'd consider that, representing this college. And this college, in the League of Innovation and other stature, we have around 1,132 community colleges in this nation. It just seems to me that we should step forward as trustees and be more engaged and more involved, so I'm willing to give that a shot. There are no guarantees, of course, that I would be elected. But thanks, Bob, for challenging us on the strategic thinking part. I think we did talk about a possibility of a board retreat upcoming, where we would, we would consider, we usually have a four-hour retreat on a Saturday morning, and that we would spend at least two hours, I think it's also budget time, to look at an overall budget process, but we'd spend at least a two hours beginning the discussion of how strategic should we be as trustees? And should we be thinking a little differently with these challenges that Dr. Drummond has proposed? Any comments or questions about the report? We're going to ask you to, when you go to these meetings, to come back and help us get better. Trustee Cross?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I've had occasion recently to travel the state, and I've got to say, I thank Dr. Drummond for his insight and questions that he's asking, and many of which I've had, although he has articulated better. But one of the ones that I have is, as I travel the state on various highways, I've got to say, one of the best community colleges that's represented across the state is one in west-central Kansas. And it's got a number of locations, and I think that in a year and a half, or a little over a year on the board, I have various questions that I think we should talk about, how it is that we do deal with these new modalities, and what are places in the market for higher education? And I know that there's various political problems and minefields to be dealt with, but this, this community college has got a tremendous outreach, and I'm not sure what the rules are, what the regulations are, or what our role would be in competing or dealing with that. But I certainly do welcome Dr. Drummond's comments, and concur that we need to be thinking about what it is we're doing these next 50 years.
I think another point we discussed in our debrief is, you know, our reports are pretty, our meetings are pretty routine with reporting out, and we get a lot of the data, and some of these reports certainly are important, and we need to go through them. But one of the things we'll talk about at the retreat is, should we spend more time in this meeting with some strategic discussions? We've got four really great goals that the staff and the faculty are all working on. And what should be our interest strategically, not, we're governance, not management, but strategically, what role do we play in those goals and reinforce the key performance indicators as well as those, those goals? Goal one, for example, deals with student achievement and degree completion, and that's a real high priority across the country. Okay, thank you very much. Anything else?
One last thing, I would support your candidacy, I would support that, just to say.
Well, I really believe we need to formally act on that. I would, I would ask if there's a motion.
I second his motion.
So moved, excuse me. Any questions about that? Again, all we're saying is that the college would support travel to those, basically those two events. Any personal expense would be mine.
We, we have supported travel for trustees to those events in the past, and to support it, for the opportunity to have a direct input and potentially get somebody on the board is a no-brainer, it's something we should do. We've been a leader through the League of Innovation, if we can be, you know, not only lead, but learn through ACCT, then we ought to do it, and so I support that as well.
Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I believe that's a long enough report. Thank you, Dr. Drummond. Foundation report, trustee Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last month, I talked briefly about the, the foundation dinner, we did have more than 100 people attend the foundation dinner last month, and at that time I announced, but I'll remind everyone that Mary Birch won the Open Puddle Award for Distinguished Service and Fundraising, and the foundation's Colleague Award went to Dr. Day, and for his service and partnership with financial aid to make the scholarships available for students. The Beyond Bounds Electric Event was the weekend after our last board meeting, and it drew about 600 people. It was the 10th biannual event since 1992, so over 20 years. This year, all of the previous event chairs were recognized as honorary chairs for the 10th annual, or 10th biannual event. The JCC catering department again outdid themselves with an amazing, with amazing action stations throughout the atrium that included crab legs, shrimp, and gelato bar. I wasn't able to attend, but my, the mental picture in my head of a bunch of people dressed up attempting to eat crab legs is quite entertaining. Unofficial numbers estimate the gross proceeds of the event at $258,000, which includes sponsorships of more than $40,000, with a net profit of about $180,000. Record-high numbers in all of the categories in the event, I've already heard a number of people comment about the mobile bidding, which they used for the first time, the mobile, using your, you know, text to bid, and it was, it was pretty popular. The 60, the live auction also set a record of a $60,000 piece of art that was auctioned off at live auction during the event by Dana Schutz. Special thanks to Bruce Hartman and his staff, as well as the JCC volunteers who made that event a success. Also, a couple of weekends ago, as already mentioned, the 28th Annual Summon Chanted Evening was held at the Marriott, and again, Mary Birch chaired the event, and Brian Biggs with Metcalfe Bank led the sponsorship committee. Dr. Gary Marsh, who has been in the news a little bit, he is, he founded Heart to Heart International, he is an Army veteran, a medical doctor, and he was our Johnson County of the Year this year. He had just returned, well, about two months prior to the event from, from serving in Liberia. So, insert joke about hand sanitizer. With this total, Summon Chanted Evening has now, oh, I'm sorry, the, the event raised more than $510,000 to support scholarships at the college, and at this point, that brings our overall Summon Chanted Evening total to more than $6 million for JCC scholarships. I wanted to point out some of the larger donors and give them some, some FaceTime, some audio time. $25,000 legacy sponsors included BNSF Railway, Clay Blair Family Foundation, Ben Craig, Friends of Barton P. Cohen, Kirk Foundation, Alatha Medical Center, the Renier Family Foundation. There were three sunflower sponsors at the $15,000 level, Black and Beach, Midwest Trust, FCI Advisors, and Dick and Barbara Scholl. And there were three $10,000 open puddle sponsors, the Barton P. and Mary D. Cohen Charitable Trust, the Educate, Enrich, and Enable Fund with the Zamarowski Family, and the Kansas City Regional Association of Realtors. Following Summon Chanted Evening, the foundation exec board, we did meet last week, and McGladrey did our foundation audit as well, and again, the foundation received an unqualified report, and again, no issues between auditors and getting in to meet with the foundation. The same glowing, glowing review, and I, I hope I'm never part of an organization that doesn't have one of those, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what that was like. Every time they come in, whether it's for the, the community college itself, for our finances, or for the foundation, every time, it is a glowing, glowing review, not only of the organizational finances, but of the, the people that provide them and do all the work on our behalf. So, a big thanks to Joanne, and Joni, and Sherry at the foundation for all of their efforts and professionalism to really produce the outstanding audit result. That concludes my report, and I would stand for questions.
Any questions of trustee Sharp? Any comments? Trustee Cross?
I'd just like to note, I got the chance to speak to United States Senator Jerry Moran again, who always miraculously remembers that he, like my mother, is from Rooks County. He was there, and I just wanted to mention that, and thank him for all the work that he does for the state of Kansas, and...
Good, thank you.
Stop the rambling there, so.
Comments, questions? Thank you, trustee Sharp. And we really appreciate all the great work the foundation does. I had a guest there for the first time, and he was so impressed that he will be, he will be involved next year, so it was really a nice, positive event. The next item is the consent agenda, it's a time when we deal with a number of routine items. Does any trustee wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? The trustee?
B1 retirements.
Okay. Any other, any other items to be pulled? With that exception, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion in a second, any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B1 retirements, trustee Stewart?
You know, we have, Dr. Sobchak commented about 2,500 employees, and we have many, many outstanding employees that retire every year. And as a trustee, we don't get to know a lot of the employees, and so there are a few that we get to know, and, and so when I speak on this, I really speak on behalf of all the retirees. And so when I speak on this, I really speak on behalf of all the retirees, but I noticed we have one that I didn't know Denise Moore was going to retire at the end of January and I just want to commend her on a fantastic job that, of running our IT here at the college, a very critical area, full of a lot of minefields. And you've maneuvered through that and helped the college maneuver through that with great professionalism. And I just, obviously concerned about where we go after Denise, but I want to commend you on a fantastic tenure here at the college in keeping us up to date with our technology, but also keeping some of the bad stuff away that I know is hard to do. So thank you for doing that. There were others. I know Dennis Stae is going to be retiring soon and Don Perkins. Just some outstanding employees, but I want to make that comment.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments regarding item B1? Trustee Cross and then trustee Sharp.
Go ahead, trustee.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to echo trustee Stewart's comments. When I was in Topeka, Denise was with the state, the state of Kansas and the IT department. And I have to say, I think my first words when I came on the board here and learned that she was now at the community college, I thought, wow, what a coup that we got her. So we have been, I've been blessed in both situations to see her work at the state level and now at the community college and wish you all the best in your work. And you have set us on a fantastic path here. Thank you.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In addition to all these retirements, I understand you are retiring and though we don't lose your talent, we just wanted to say congratulations there, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We're not going to applaud.
I would entertain a motion to approve item B1 on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you all for your service to the college. We do have two executive sessions this evening. The first session, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing consultation with the board's bargaining representation in employer-employee negotiations to protect the public interest in negotiating a fair and equitable contract. This session is projected the last fifteen minutes. I would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Terry Schles, Judy Corb, Barbara Larson, Becky Sintliver, Susan Ryder and Tanya Wilson to join us for this executive committee and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Musil, seconded by Stewart. And the executive session will start at, I see on the clock, it's about six fifty-two. Let's just make it seven and make it easy. Seven-minute break. We'll start the executive session at seven.
We are out of executive session number one.
Really?
No action was taken. We are now going into executive session number two. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-selected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. The session will last up to twenty minutes. I'd like to invite Joe Sobchak, Terry Schles, Judy Corb, Barbara Larson, Don Perkins and Tanya Wilson to join in this executive session. I would entertain a motion to do so.
I would move to-
Is there a second?
Do what you just said. Second.
We will begin this session now at seven fifteen and if you would secure the doors, we'll go into executive session two.
We are out of executive session number two. No action was taken. We're back in regular session of the November meeting. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Our November meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.